Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to tonight's meeting. And if everybody would stand for Mr. Hammond from the Bethel Community Church.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening that we can gather together to conduct the business of our city. We thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy as Americans to come together and do this. We pray, God, that you will bless our city, bless the proceedings tonight, give our council members wisdom, guidance, and direction that as they decide for our city the things before them that it would go well for them. We pray your blessing upon them, upon their families. We pray for the leadership of our city, for the employees and the citizens as well. And we pray your blessing upon them as you blessed your people when you said, "The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face towards you and give you peace." In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. I will call the meeting to order at 6:01. And please remain standing for the pledge allegiance from Commander Rayna.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask Ms. Melanie, City Clerk, to call roll call. Here.
Here.
Jones.
President.
Lewis.
Here.
Johnson.
We have a quorum. We're now move to item four, consideration of approval agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Jones, some of... Do I have a second? Mr. Begonia?
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Jones, second from Councilman Begonia. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Now we'll go to item number five, presentations. And I'll step right down here. All right, Ms. Jennifer. This is a certificate of recognition presented to Jennifer. Canciola, Accounting One, Finance Department. In recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service of the city of Los Banos and for being named Employee of the Month for March 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Noah Jones. All right, this is a certificate of recognition presented to Mr. Noah Jones, Police Officer, Los Banos Police Department. In recognition of your support and dedication to the community and for becoming a member of the Police Activities League, PAL Giants Hall of Fame. And we present you with this certificate of recognition. Thank you. All right, we'll now move to item number six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within jurisdiction of the city council. Includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on no agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber information table. And at this time, I would like to invite the public to come forward and speak and remind everyone to silence your phones or turn them off.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, City Council. I'm sorry, closer. Okay, very good. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning, again, or this afternoon. My name is Rep. Hill Yamas. I'm the Merced County Veteran Services Officer. And I'm here to invite you and introduce the Merced County Veterans Stand Down. It's occurring on May 5th, 2023, over at the Merced Fairgrounds from 8:00 to 5:00. We will have an opening ceremony at 09:00. Hopefully, you can make it. At 12:00 noon, we will have a free meal for everyone who attends. Again, what is the Stand Down? Stand Down is traditionally used for military units who've reached 20% to 30% nutrition rate as a result of direct combat with the enemy. Those units were then pulled back from combat in order to be refitted and rearmed and put back in the fight. That's basically what we're trying to do with this Stand Down. Provide one-stop source for our veterans so they could find all their resources in order to get back, engage with, and be a positive member of the community. Again, May 5th, over at the fairgrounds. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy Ballard, resident of Los Banos. I have a quick question first. Item number nine, is there a public forum? If there is, I can wait and talk at that time. Otherwise, I'll talk now. But you need to let me know. I don't know.
Okay, if you'd like to.
So wait until then?
Item nine?
Yes, I can wait till then, and then you'll call a public forum?
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, honorable council members, City Manager. My name's Cee Lee. I am with the Boys and Girls Club of Merced County. And I'm really excited to be here tonight just to share with you that we are programming at the College Green Facility thanks to the partnership of Parks and Recreation. We're currently serving about 75 sessions per day during spring break. This is our third day. I do welcome you to come and visit and see what we're doing. We hope to continue to service our families here. And along with that, we have a fundraiser that's coming up April 28th in Merced at our current facility. And we'd love for all of you to join us then. The invitations, I'll go ahead and leave maybe with the clerk and get them over to you. Thank you so much for your continued support.
Thank you. Right over here.
My name is Roy Todd. I'm here representing the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce. Just want to give you a few updates on some things that are going on with us. April 15th, Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a downtown Spring Street Fair sponsored by Sutter Health from 8:30 to 3:00. Have live entertainment, music, food, vendors, craft vendors, information vendors. It's a great way to kick off the end of winter and on the start of sunny days. Hope to see you all there. I've always found that it was a good investment to at least get a booth and then you can use it for like trying to generate leads for employees and things like that. If nothing else, it was, I always felt like it was money well spent for any of businesses that are out there. April 7th, we'll be celebrating the 15th anniversary of Chamber Member Baby's Nutrition. There are locations on G Street next to the Wick Office. It's going to start at noon. Love to see the city council there if they can make it. And I know noon's probably a tough one, but it's out there for you guys. And then another one that I think would be really good for you folks to attend is we're going to, our next mixer is going to be at Los Banos Memorial Sutter Health. Sutter Health sponsored five of the Chamber events this year. And that was their way of showing Los Banos their support. So we would like to support them by all of us making it out to the mixer April 27th. And it'll start at 5:30. So I think that would be a really good one, so. Chamber recently received an email confirmation that we were awarded some ARPA funds. We really appreciate that. I know that's really, that would really be a big help for us. And I don't have a lot of details. I literally found out about it about 15 minutes ago, so. Also, the Chamber has taken on the Mother's Day event in the park. Downtown Association, working with the Chamber. They agreed that we would take that on. So we're going to host that. That's going to be May 13th at Pacheco Park. In the past, it ran for two days. Firstly, the Chamber was only able to do a one-day event. It'll run from 9:00 AM to 7:30 PM. The other thing is, we have been working on our website. I've got my nephew and a subject matter expert that basically does sports information for some, for a college that's helping us get that tuned up. So we're working on getting the website tuned up. And what you're going to see, the future state, the way I best describe it would be if you could take a look at San Benito Chamber of Commerce. And there also their Visitors Bureau website. What I'm shooting for is the future state of that would look something like that one. So you'll have tons of links to where somebody clicks on a Chamber member. And then within that, they can get a QR code or whatever and go right to that person's Facebook, etc. So basically, we would come out being like, the Chamber would be the convener of all these things. So we would be like the hub in order to make all these things better for the business community. I have one minute left, and that's all I have to say for now. So, very good. All right, I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, council staff. Just want to remind everyone, this is a big weekend coming up, Easter weekend. And there's a lot of activities that'll be going on. Just want to encourage you, if you have a church home, be faithful to that and attend very special services. But if you don't, we would like to welcome you to Easter at Bethel, 10:30 AM, 415 I Street. We've got some very special things planned and so that you'll enjoy. And so we welcome you. And it's a big day for all Christians, of those who believe in the Lord. And so we welcome you to come and attend. If you don't have your church, like I said before, if you do have your own home church, we encourage you to be faithful to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Blanche George, downtown Los Banos. I live there. Just wanted to speak a little bit about the Elks. We will be attending the, well, not only be pouring beer at the fair booth, but we also have a special event at the Merced Elks. And then third, we are going to be attending the Stand Down. We did get several grants for that. So we'll be providing items for veterans. FYI, for anybody that is hearing this, if there is a veteran that is getting a new home or a project room key or anything, we will always provide for a veteran. If the veteran doesn't live here, but his family does, we would assist with that also. We have several money pockets that we could dive into. We do have on April 17th, a event, a fundraiser event. It's called the Young Bucks, and they're going to be making a meal. And those proceeds are going to go to good works here in the community. But we've got downtown, and I just wanted to mention a few things. There is a commercial building that was built in 1950 at 623 J Street. It's available, and it's right next to the drugstore, and it's a perfect site. Just like my home, 526 K Street is also a commercial building. It was built in 1910, and it just looks just like my house. But it's beautiful, and it's for commercial rent. These houses in the downtown area go fast. This house is at 420 L Street. It has Tiffany glass throughout the home, and it too was built in 1910. So downtown is where we live, work, play, and shop. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else in the audience? I see no one. We'll turn to City Clerk, see if there's any emails. Okay.
I have a few questions first. With the new PD station coming along, can the old one be turned into a bigger animal shelter? They have the rooms, halls for it. Two, with the school shootings happening, is there any way we can contribute getting bulletproof doors and windows in case of a shooter? A bulletproof backpack won't protect a child from the back of the head or face or front part of the body. Thank you, Melissa McKee. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Melanie. I see no one, no more. Then we'll go ahead and close the public forum. And we move to item number seven, consideration of the approval of a consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by the city council member. We'll turn to Ms. Melanie.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 237894 through 238186 in the amount of $1,666,830.17. City Council Resolution Number 6621, authorizing the City Manager to approve a purchase order with Lear Auto for automated license plate reader, camera, and software. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have anyone? I see no one. I'll take a motion for approval. Councilmember Begonia?
I motion to approve consent agenda item 78. 78? All of them. All of them. As a presented.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Jones? Yes, Mayor Protem, I'll second that. Thank you. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilmember Begonia, second by Jones. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No pose. Agenda is passed. We now move on to item number eight, public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action as described herein, the court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or written correspondence delivered to the city prior to the public hearing. This is item A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of a conditional use permit 2023-01 and a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA pursuant to Section 15301, existing facilities to allow the use of a Type 47 alcohol license for on-sale and general alcohol for bona fide eating place. The Roundup Sports Bar located at 830 I Street, more specifically identified as Accessor Partial Number 026-143-003. And we'll turn to Economic Development Director, Ms. Souza Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and City Council. I'm going to keep this item fairly brief as this item was recently brought before the city council back in October of 2022 for a Type 41 alcohol license. And at that time, the city council approved the conditional use permit. A Type 41 is for beer and wine only. And so at this time, the applicant of the Roundup Sports Bar located at 830 I Street is requesting an intensification of their alcohol license from a Type 41 to a Type 47, which is for general alcohol. Their hours of operation are not changing, and their layout, as provided within the staff report, have not changed. All of the findings are still relevant, that were the same as within the Type 41. This is, though, a new conditional use permit is required per our municipal code in that any change in the conditional use permit, and in this case, an intensification, does require that to come back before the city council. So with that, staff is asking that the city council would consider approving Resolution Number 6622, approving a CEQA categorical exemption for existing facilities and approved conditional use permit Number 2023-01 to allow the sale of alcohol under a Type 47 alcohol license for the Roundup Sports Bar located at 830 I Street. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. I will now open it up to the public. If there's anyone to like to speak on this. I see no one in the public. Do we have any emails? Okay. I will then ask anyone up here to discuss? All right. All right, I'll accept a motion for the city council Resolution Number 6622. Councilmember Begonia?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6622 as submitted.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Jones? Yes, Mayor Protem, I'll second that. All right, got a motion from Councilmember Begonia, second by Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No pose. Motion has passed. All right, we now go to item number nine, ordinance number 1202, repealing in part and amending Section 2.3.126 of Article 1, Chapter 3 to Title 2 of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to the City Manager. And we'll turn to City Attorney Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, City Council, members of the public. In February of 2023, the city council approved the employment agreement of our new city manager, Josh Panero. In that agreement, one of the terms of employment was that in order to terminate his employment, it would take a vote of five of the city council members. That term in his agreement is inconsistent with the current language of the municipal code, which I have put in my staff report, which requires only three votes of the city council in order to terminate the services of the city manager. So in order to bring those two things into consistency, we're presenting for you tonight an ordinance which repeals the ordinance so that the employment agreement will control in terms of any move to terminate the employment of this city manager. And so I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
And I believe Ms. Ballard wanted to speak on that item as well.
Do you have your five minutes?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I know this is probably useless, but I still want to voice my opinion. So if things come up, at least I see in most of your paperwork, it said if you don't voice in opposition, you can never bring it up again. So that's why I'm voicing it now. A 5-0 vote is really out of line for the norm. It is, I've called numerous cities, different counties. Everybody says, "Who the hell would do that?" That's the impression that I got from other cities that I spoke to. In the state of California, everything is either two-thirds or a simple majority. I think it's something for job security, which makes me wonder why anyone would want that in a contract. If you're going to do a good job, you shouldn't have If you're going to do a good job, you shouldn't have to worry about somebody voicing those opinions. And to give that to an employee, even a contract inside of a contract, is something that you're penalizing future council? So you'd have to do this all over again? Future mayor, it's only for two terms. Everybody else has their term limits in regards to it. You shouldn't mess with the ordinances that we have. I think you should alter the contract and allow him to be treated in fair, either a two-thirds vote or a simple majority. That's my opinion. I hope you think about it, and look at how whacked out it looks. So I'm asking you to think hard on it, and not just give it your rubber stamp of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we are going to make a motion to waive the first reading of Ordinance Number Did you want to speak, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Hit your button. Okay, there it is.
Thank you. Yes, we generally have closing comments before we take a vote, because I didn't have any questions of our city attorney.
By the time you didn't have someone to ask us up here first, I'm sorry.
Yeah. That's okay. So, these are my closing remarks in regards to this. I think, based on the last vote for the contract, it's probably pretty well understood that I'm not going to vote for this one. There's no constitutional thing that says that you have to have a two-thirds vote here at the city, although it's the general practice of general law cities, and I'm sure most cities who are not general law. I have never heard of a city doing anything like this. But we did this kind of backwards, because we had the contract first, and the ordinance was in place, so we broke our own city law. We broke our own city law to do this. And now, we're trying to clean it up by doing away with this portion of the ordinance, so that it takes care of everything. I don't know of any city council that would strap themselves and tie their hands to give a contract of a 5-0 vote, so that someone has a Caesar-type security. I've never seen that happen. Never. And I don't understand why this council is tying their hands to do this. Because at any point, any one of the council members sitting up here could be upset about something that a city manager may do, or not agree, or feel that that person, whether it's this city manager or any other city manager, is not doing the job as expected by the council. But in this way, with a 5-0 vote, it doesn't matter if you have four people that disagree, that one person can still keep the city manager in their position. This is kind of like the stuff that's happening in our country right now, isn't it? Where the vote of the people don't matter? People do what they want to do in office? But I had more respect for our council, whether we agreed or disagreed on anything, but to change a law that cities in the state of California have in order to secure a person's job, to me, it's shameful. And the other side of the coin is, our current city manager is an at-will employee, and right now, we have our Community Economic Development Director, our Public Works Director/Parks and Recreation Director, and our Fire Chief, who are all at-will. And if for some reason, our city manager is not pleased with the services that they're offering, or could disagree, under at-will, it means that, just that, it's at-will. You can terminate that person. So, we have taken away our own privilege of an at-will, but we leave that privilege with the city manager to still terminate other employees within our city who are at-will. The only two employees we have right now that are not at-will is the Chief of Police and our HR Director. So, all the other employee department heads that we have are subject to be terminated, because they are at-will employees. So if we give a contract like this, why don't we just give it to all of our at-will people? It's only fair. I've just never seen anything like this before. So, I'm thoroughly disgusted. This is a nefarious act, as far as I'm concerned, and I hope that this council won't vote for it, but I doubt that that's what's going to happen tonight. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. Now, I will accept the motion for the Ordinance 1202.
Do I got a comment?
Okay, go ahead.
You know, it seems like we have a habit of breaking our own laws. Back in last year, when a simple majority fired the city manager, went 21 days without a city manager, which goes against our bylaws. So, to come up here and to preach about what is right, and to say this goes against principles, the only reason why we're here is to correct what three lousy city officials did, and to prevent that from happening again. There's no guarantee that I'm going to be here tomorrow or Doug. We can both fall into black holes. Whoever sits up here next, we'd have to trust that they would do what is best for the city. We know by going forward with this vote, that we at least have four years of going on the right path. And that's why we're here right now, is to fix your guys' problems that you created for the city, unnecessary problems. So with that, Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of Ordinance Number 1202 as read by title.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
No oppose?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. That one passes. We go to items, are the same item, but this time, we are going to introduce the ordinance Number 1202, repealing in part and amending Section 2.3.126 of Article 1, Chapter 3, to Title 2 of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to the city manager. Councilmember Jones?
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance Number 1202 as read by title.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
I second the motion.
Ms. Melanie, can you make a roll call, please?
Mayor?
Yes?
Begonia?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
No.
Jones?
All right. Three to one, it passes. Ordinance Number 1202. We'll now move to item number 10. Consolation of the regular city council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, May 3, 2023, due to the May Day Fair. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
Second.
Have a motion, Councilmember Jones, second by Begonia. All in favor?
Aye.
No oppose? We will now move to advisement of public notices. The three reports will go to Economic Development. Ms. Sousa Elms?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor Protem. So the first public hearing item is for a cottage food operator. This is for Alessandra Conick at 2280 Emory Court. She will be preparing baked goods and pastries. The second is for Pedro Ramon, doing business as Taqueria Don Pedro. They will be located at 1560 East Pacheco Boulevard. This will be a mobile food vendor permit. And the last is a conditional use permit for a place of worship. This is for Everlasting Church. They are requesting to be located within the General Industrial Zoning District at 115 West G Street, Suite A, which is subject to a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission in order to have that use within the General Industrial Zoning District. These public hearings will be held on Wednesday, April 12, at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. I will move to item number 12, the city manager report. We'll move to city manager, Inara.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'd like to give a big thank you to the Parks and Rec team. This last Saturday, we had the Easter egg hunt event at Olivera Park. It went really well, had a really good turnout. The weather was really good, so I just want to say thank you to the Parks and Rec team for all the hard work that they put on. I received a lot of feedback from folks in the community. They really enjoyed it. The kids had a great time. There's food there, bounce houses, so it was an excellent event. So, great work to them on that. This past week, there was a career fair at Pacheco High School. It was really nice to see all the kids interacting. We had the police department there, the fire department there, and folks from the Parks and Rec team there at the career fair. So that was a really good event. It's always nice to see the kids learning about all the different careers and jobs that are available out there. So, we enjoy that. Big congratulations to Jennifer Canchola for being Employee of the Month, and to Noah Jones for being mentioned, inducted into the Giants Hall of Fame. It's a really big deal, I think, and so, very proud to have him as part of our team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Panera. And we'll now ask, Ms. Lewis, do you have anything on clean energy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I have one thing I'd like to share with the community. A bulletin was sent out to our staff from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and it gives the annual toxicity report for the year 2020. If anyone's interested here or online, who would like to get that report, I'll be happy to send it to you, and you can reach me at Deborah, D-E-B-O-R-A-H.Louis, L-E-W-I-S, at losbanos.org, and I will send a copy of the report to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And Mayor Yanis is not here, so I'm sure when he comes back on our next meeting, he'll update us on the MCAG. We'll now move to the city council member reports. And we'll go to Ms. Lewis.
Yes, I'd also like to give a shout out to our Parks and Recreation staff. They did a wonderful job for our second annual Easter egg hunt over at Olivera Park. The kids were quite anxious to get out there and pick up all the candy. It was almost like locusts on the ground. They would just kind of crawl through, and after they passed through, there was nothing left on the backside. But it was a lot of fun, and I really enjoyed being out there with the kids and seeing them have fun. And Chief, I hope that your event for installing the smoke alarms in the various homes turned out really well. I participated in the one prior to that, but due to the event at the park, I wasn't able to attend that. So, I hope that turned out well for you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I'll save my last. Mr. Doug?
I just want to, well, report on what I, the lady that came here, I think her name's Seeley, and the Boys and Girls Club, and I, you know, they're right there in my district, and I do see them out there, and how organized they are with all the kids, and it looks great. I didn't know that I can just pop in. I would have liked to. Now that we were invited, I will be going within the next, either tomorrow or Friday, to see what we're doing, because we're all in spring break right now, our students, and it's great to see things in the community. That's only 75 kids. I know there's thousands, and I know they all probably have Xbox or Switch, but it's awesome to see them outside, interacting with other kids during this time, when maybe they may just be sitting at home playing video games. So, I'll go check that out within the next two days, and let you know how awesome they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Begonia. Mr. Jones?
Yes, for those that don't know already, there's already, there's a little addition to our city website, and I give credit to our Mayor Paul Yanis for coming up with the idea. The city is now listing recently completed projects on our website, so people can see what we've been working on. It's under the Popular Links tab. Right now, you'll find about 17 recently completed projects with photos and brief description of what it is. It's just one of many ways that we're working on keeping the public informed with what we're doing. Also, there's still time to purchase tickets for the Downtown Association Casino Night that will be held on Saturday, April 29. This year's event will be back at the Loeb's Barn. There'll be dinner, games, raffle, live auction. Proceeds from the event go back into our downtown for beautification, events, and operations. Tickets can be purchased at the Downtown Association office at 907 6 Street. And that is all. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And now, it's back to me. I just also like to congratulate Ms. Canchola and Mr. Noah Jones for their recognition tonight. And at this time, I have nothing further else. We'll move on forward. And at this time, item 15 is going to be closed session. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9 and parentheses B, one potential case. And we'll make a motion once we return. Thank you. We returned from closed session, and staff has their direction. And we now will move to item 16, adjournment. I'll accept a motion. Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Second? Councilmember Begonia?
Second.
Motion from Jones, second from Begonia. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Council, we are adjourned. 6:47.